Good evening and welcome to the council meeting. We are back from our closed session. Tonight, we want to take a moment and recognize our United States military. November is the month that we take a moment and honor our veterans and the men and women currently serving in our armed forces. Their bravery, commitment, and patriotism are the reasons our nation remains secure, and we are deeply indebted to them. I would like to invite Cheryl Hink, there she is, from the Thousand Oaks Kiwanis Club to the podium, and you are there already, to lead our Veterans Day tribute.
Thank you. And leading us in our pledge of allegiance this evening is Amanda Cromlin. Amanda?
Please stand. Right hand over your heart, ready and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remain standing, and Kyle Warner will lead us in "God Bless America."
(Singing) God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above. From the mountains to the prairies, to the oceans wide with foam. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, my home sweet home. Thank you for your service, veterans.
Okay. You may be seated while we introduce some of our people here. How about you three standing in front, and then you hold your poster up? Okay? Yeah, right beside him. Okay. I'm Cheryl Hink, a member of T.O. Kiwanis, and advisor to several of their service clubs. The Key Clubs in high schools, and the Builders Club in the middle schools. We have a few representatives here from the groups tonight to honor our veterans. Those dedicated men and women who have served, or who are serving, in our armed forces. As I spread this important opportunity to our service groups to unite here this evening, there was lots of excitement. Then reality set in. Many students are so busy tonight with evening activities, chorus rehearsals, soccer practice, tryouts, even volunteer assignments. I was bemoaning the response, but then I realized that all the safe, fun, and important opportunities and choices that we have, and our youth have, here in America, are due in the big picture of things to our honored veterans, who served in the past and the present to keep our country secure and to raise the cause of freedom. Whether the service be on the battlefield, at home or abroad, in the sky, or even desk duty, or someone's assistant, security takes a united front, and we are thankful for all. Along with the students in front, who will identify themselves in a minute, we have honored veterans behind me, who will also, I invite them to identify themselves, and what organization they are connected with. So, students in front, do you have a microphone up there, somebody?
Oh, here it is. Okay.
Oh, is it on? Is it not? Okay. Why don't you come back here, then? So we can hear you.
I'm Amanda Cromlin. I'm from the Thousand Oaks Key Club, and I'm here to honor the veterans.
My name is Irene Jang, and I'm from Thousand Oaks High School, and I'm part of Key Club. And I want to thank all the veterans who sacrificed their lives, families, and like properties and everything to protect citizens of America, and thank you so much.
I am Nicholas Burton. I am from Los Cerritos at the Builders Club. My grandfather is also in the service, and I wanted to thank all the veterans that are standing behind me, and all of them who still serve and have served.
Our gentleman here to step up and identify themselves.
I'm Burl Spurlock, I'm retired Navy as in Vietnam SEALs. Thank you. I live here in Thousand Oaks.
I'm Bob Harper. I'm the quartermaster of the Eric Hubert Post 11395, Veterans of Foreign Wars, located here in Thousand Oaks. I'm a former Marine in Vietnam era.
My name is Jack Carter. I'm post commander of 11395, Eric Hubert Post, Thousand Oaks, and U.S. Navy, Vietnam. One other thing I'd like to say about these poppies that we have, excuse me, that we have on. It was started in World War I by Colonel McCray, and, well, not Colonel McCray, excuse me, by the nuns to get money, to get medicine, to help the wounded soldiers. And we carry on this every year at Memorial Day and Veterans Day, to raise money to help veterans in need, widows and orphans of veterans. Thank you.
My name is Henry Papika. I'm a member of the VFW in Thousand Oaks, 11395, and I served in Navy in World War II and also Korea.
My name is Maynard Gentry. I'm a member of Post 11395, Thousand Oaks. I was in the war of Korea from 1950 to 1953. Thank you.
My name is Gary Irland, and I'm from the 173rd Airborne, Vietnam, 1969, 1970. I'm the vice commander of the Eric Hubert Post 11395, and just like to say that, you know, we're all proud of our service, and we do that for you, and for these type of young people, for our country, and we're proud of our service. Thank you.
My name is Charlie Hooker, and I'm the commander of the San Fernando Valley Military Order of World Wars. I'm also a member of the Kiwanis Club here in Thousand Oaks. I served in Korea, and I'm a 37-year veteran.
Good evening, council. My name is Jack Tucker, and I'm a veteran of Vietnam, the Vietnam era, and I was a military policeman for a while, and then later I was in charge of a joint travel unit, servicing all of the branches of the military. I am a member of the Thousand Oaks Kiwanis Club, involved with the Key Club organizations. We have several of them in the community, and I'm extremely proud of the Kiwanis Club service. It's a pleasure and an honor to be here. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity of sharing, and I'll just add that I'm a proud mother of a Navy captain, Captain Jeffrey Hink, so I had to say that. And for all the veterans who are here today, if there are any in the stands, would you stand up for us, please, if you are a veteran? Do we have any extra veterans? Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Round of applause, and thank you very much.
Thank you also very much. Thank you Cheryl Hink for having the wonderful idea of having our veterans come down here along with the young ones to honor the men and women of our military. Veterans Day, we're celebrating it here also at the Kuneho Creek Park on November 11th. Thank you all very much. That was a wonderful idea. I'm not sure if we ever saying "God Bless America" in these chambers. I've been here 10 years, and I have not heard it, so that was wonderful. Thank you. We will now begin the special presentation portion of our, oh, first of all, we need to ask the Madam Clerk to do the roll call. Thanks.
Councilmember Irwin? Here. Councilmember Price?
Here.
Councilmember Adam?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Fox?
Here.
Mayor Bill De La Pena?
Present. Are there any requests for continuance of any public hearing or agenda item? I don't think there are any. Thank you. And now, the special presentations, and I will walk to the podium. We do have a special presentation, and before I do that, I have some exciting news to share with everybody in the community, and that is that the city of Thousand Oaks has been selected as a host city for the 2014 Amgen Tour of California, and that is taking place May 11th through the 18th of next year. We are very, very excited to have the Tour of California back here in Thousand Oaks for what will be the fourth time, for the ninth race, and it is happening during a very special period in our time, in our history, and that is the city's 50th anniversary. So we thought that that would be a wonderful opportunity to showcase the city, share in the celebrations, and to have the Amgen Tour of California, start the last leg of the race here and end here as well. And just for information, Amgen obviously is headquartered here in Thousand Oaks, so that made perfect sense to have the race then end here during our 50th anniversary. All right. Next, we would like to recognize several of our local business owners who generously supported the Thousand Oaks Police Charitable Foundation Golf Tournament this past October, and I think we did have a couple of council members who attended that. We are extremely grateful for your support, and I would like to ask Thousand Oaks Police Captain Freihoff and Tammy Helmuth, president of the Thousand Oaks Police Charitable Foundation, to introduce our sponsors and share the results of the tournament. Hello?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
There you go. So, I don't know, who will speak first?
I'll speak first, absolutely.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council, city staff, distinguished guests. The Thousand Oaks Police Charitable Foundation is our fundraising arm that allows us to reach out to the community and do things that we see as a law enforcement community that we want to help facilitate. The police department doesn't have a separate budget that allows us to hold special events or training seminars, but through the Thousand Oaks Police Charitable Foundation and through those donations, we can. This year, we held our first-ever Women's Symposium. It was on healthy relationships, healthy living, and healthy lifestyles. It was a sell-out event. It was no charge, but we had 130 participants, and there's a waitlist for next year. We had some phenomenal speakers, most notably, we had a lot of talented doctors from our Los World Hospital here, and also Maureen Shea, who's the former world champion boxer, the one that made the story Million Dollar Baby about, if you have seen the movie, that was who it was made behind, and she spoke about relationships she was in, and the effort that she took to protect herself and develop an inner strength so that she could stay healthy and maintain those healthy relationships. So it's something that we're proud to be able to bring to our community, and we can't do that without the effort of our sponsors. So tonight, we would like to take an opportunity to recognize those sponsors, and I think we have some certificates for them as well. Tammy Helmuth, the president of our Thousand Oaks Police Charitable Foundation, will give you the results of the tournament, as well as announce our sponsors.
Thank you. I'll tell you what, we had a great year. It's been 17 years, this is our 17th year, and we grossed over $110,000. So we're very happy, and I will have to thank a couple of the council members for coming and attending and bidding on auction items. We had Councilmember Joel Price, our auctioneer, and by the end of the night, we had him almost lost his voice because we had so many amazing items. I would like to call up and acknowledge some of our sponsors. We have Amy Torada here, who is vice president of marketing for Pleasant Holidays, and I will tell you, without their support, we would not be as successful. I think they provided us 20-plus live auction trips from across the globe, so thank you very much, Amy.
Congratulations.
And I believe we have Chris Kome from O'Gara Coach, our first-year sponsor. Did he not come in? Chris? Oh. We have Dave Barley with Amgen, who's also one of our board members. We have John Gress, who has also brought his chef with Mastro's Steakhouse. Oh, he had to go back to work? We'll catch up with him. I don't know if Marcus Henke is here with Cisco's Restaurants, who basically provided some amazing food on the course. Bill Paynard, Platinum Towing. We have Rudy Gonzalez with Southern California Edison. I see him in the crowd. Thank you, Rudy. Been with us for many years. Thank you very much. Margie Yaro, first-year sponsor, Alpam Marketing. And for those of you who see our newsletters, this is the designer. Trey Lindell. Trey is here with the Oaks Mace Ridge, who I'm sure is getting ready for the holiday Albert with Old Oaks Cigar and Wine. Gentleman comes out every year and brings his, I don't know how you call him, the person who rolls, hand-rolls cigars, man's favorite. Kevin Burnett with Kevin Burnett Designs. And I'm going to go quickly, in case I missed anybody behind me. We had a couple people who are not here. Silver Star Automotive, Susan Marotta, she has provided our hole-in-one cars for, I believe, the last 17 years. Two years ago, we did give one away. It was one, so we do appreciate her support. Rick Limo with Caruso Affiliated is not here. We have Young's Market, who provided an amazing array of alcohol and sodas. Hi at Westlake. I don't believe we have anybody here.
No, they couldn't make it.
Okay. Audio Visual Company, Inc., Brendan's Irish Pub, The Palm Garden Hotel, John Moyen Jewelers, Legend Sports Photography, and Wilshire TV. All of these sponsors helped us to raise these monies, and I'll tell you what, raising $110,000, gross, we haven't figured out the net, it does go a long way to help and provide some of the amazing programs that keep this city one of the safest in the nation. So, if you could, applause for this group.
Thank you so much, and we would like to have a group picture taken. Why don't you all step out onto the red carpet along with the city council?
All right. We now move to public comments. Madam Clerk?
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers for public hearing items shall be called and heard during the public hearing. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole, and all documents for city council and the official record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Four people have presented cards in pursuit to council standards. Speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. Our first speaker is Dr. Richard Eelsley, followed by Jim Wolfe and Bill Oaks.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, and everyone else within the sound of my voice. I am Dr. Richard Eelsley. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks, and it is my pleasure to be here to tell you about the next talk in the Discovery Center's Science Speaker Series. The purpose of the Science Speaker Series is to bring in scientists who are doing cutting-edge work and who can explain that work in terms that anybody can understand. We like people to go away saying, "Wow, that was interesting. I didn't know that." So we, our next talk is two days from now, Thursday, November 7th, right here in the Shireform Theater at 7:30. TOTV, could you put up a slide that's on the overhead? The speaker will be Dr. Ravi Davae. He is with UCLA Health Systems. He's a cardiologist. He practices in Thousand Oaks as well as other places. He's going to talk about five cutting-edge advances in treating heart disease. This includes both preventing heart disease or curing it once you get it. So this should be really interesting to anybody who has a heart. We have, you can, tickets are $15 for adults. Got some, huh? $15 for adults, 10 for senior citizens, teachers, and students. You can get them in person at the Civic Arts Plaza box office, or you can order them online from Ticketmaster for a slight extra fee. You can buy them beforehand or the night of the event. We have three more talks after this in this season's series. In February, Michael Sander from JPL will talk about future space exploration missions, and whether they ought to be done by robots or people. In March, Dr. Stuart Sumida of Cal State San Bernardino will talk about if you're going to make an animated character in a movie, and you want people to think it's realistic, you really have to understand physiology, bones, muscles, skin, hair. He has advised Hollywood on lots of animated movies. And finally, in April, Dr. Amanda Clark from UCLA will talk about stem cells and how they are being used to cure human health abnormalities. So please come and hear these exciting talks.
Thank you. It sounds very exciting. Next up, we have Jim Wolfe, followed by Bill Oaks and Billy Martin.
Madam Mayor, council, my name is Jim Wolfe. I'm from Thousand Oaks, and I believe, is this thing ready? The current average income of ranch residents that are still alive, who were residents in 2010, is $1,050 per month, the lowest being $655 per month. The average is up a little bit from 2010 because we've lost 14 residents whose average incomes were a bit lower. So in the world of science, they say that every action has an equal and opposite reaction. In the world of politics, decisions have consequences, which often are opposite of intentions. So I wanted to illustrate that a little bit for you tonight, and this is an actual bank Seriously redacted, of course, to illustrate a typical resident. We'll call her Daisy. It's an actual resident, but we don't have any Daisies, so we're just going to call her Daisy for purposes of the meeting here. That may be a little bit easier to see. You can see that last month's ending balance, Daisy, was a grand total of $26.11 that she had coming into the first of the month. And this is how her first day went. She received her social security check for $1,006, and then had about $60 she took out in cash for meals. This usually was by other residents, buying her food and such. So at the end of the day, after paying her rent and utilities and her house payment, she ends up with $306 spent for the rest of the month. The next 30 days, you have $306 to spend. That equals $10.23 a day, and we can all live on that, of course. That's pretty easy to do. Used to be able to travel Europe on $5 a day, but of course, we forgot a couple of things like insurance for her house, maintenance for her home, medicine because she's getting a little old. Thank goodness she doesn't have a car, and she has to give up little things ladies like, like going to the hairdresser, getting her nails done, and of course, little kids will not have Christmas presents perhaps this year.
Thank you, Mr. Wolfe.
So thank you very much for your attention.
Next is Bill Oaks, followed by Billy Martin.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. I'm Bill Oaks from Thousand Oaks. I had an opportunity to visit the Ranch Mobile Home Park to see their community and visit some of the residents. It's a beautiful and unique community, and if time permits, I recommend that the council take up the offer to visit the Ranch Mobile Home Park and their community. I wanted to remind the city council of the Thousand Oaks Remissible Code as it refers to mobile home rent stabilization by reading the introduction to this code. Now, this is from the Thousand Oaks City Remissible Code Chap- she ends up with $306 spent for the rest of the month. The next 30 days, you'll have $306 to spend. That equals $10.23 a day. And we can all live on that, of course. That's pretty easy to do. Used to be able to travel Europe on $5 a day. But, of course, we forgot a couple of things like insurance for her house, maintenance for her home, medicine because she's getting a little old. Thank goodness she doesn't have a car. And she has to give up little things ladies like, like going to the hairdresser, getting her nails done. And, of course, little kids will not have Christmas presents perhaps this year.
Thank you, Mr. Wolfe.
So, thank you very much for your attention.
Next is Bill Oakes, followed by Billy Martin.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Bill Oakes from Thousand Oaks. I had an opportunity to visit the Ranch Mobile Home Park to see their community and visit some of the residents. It's a beautiful and unique community, and if time permits, I recommend that the Council take up the offer to visit the Ranch Mobile Home Park and their community. I wanted to remind the City Council of the Thousand Oaks Mummisable Code as it refers to mobile home rent stabilization by reading the introduction to this code. Now, this is from the Thousand Oaks City Mummisable Code, Chapter 15, Mobile Home Rent Stabilization, Section 5-25.01, and it's the findings and purpose. There is a shortage of vacant and available mobile home spaces in the city of Thousand Oaks resulting in critically low vacancy factor. Many mobile home tenants are on fixed incomes and, if displaced as a result of the inability to pay rent increases, must relocate at a substantial loss or expense. And in addition, as a result of such housing shortages, they may be unable to find a decent, safe, and sanitary new housing at affordable rent levels. Where the difficulty in finding alternative decent housing, some tenants attempt to pay requested and uncontrolled rent increases, but as a consequence must expend a loss or other necessities of life. This is a situation that has a detrimental effect on substantial members of renters in the city, especially creating hardships on senior citizens on fixed incomes and low and moderate income households. And city data causes to be collected through the annual registration statements by submitting mobile home landlords, which confirms a mobile home space and housing shortage continues exists in the city. The vacancy rate in mobile home parks remains critically low, and the deregulation of rents at this time could lead to exorbitant rent increases and aggravation of the crisis. Problems and hardships which existed prior to the adoption of the program. This housing is necessary or reasonable to continue to regulate rents as to safeguard tenants from extensive rent increases and, at this time, provide landlords with just and reasonable return on their spaces. So, again, just trying to remind the Council of what's in the code and what we're trying to do as a city for the mobile home parks. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Billy Martin.
Hello. My name is Billy Martin, and I'm a Thousand Oaks lover. And I'm here to plug the Caneo Valley Film Festival II. But before I do, I'd like to salute my dear old dad who served in the South Pacific in World War II. This morning, I was over at the Joel McCray Ranch, and it was Joel McCray's 108th birthday. And I found out that my house was actually on his property in Sunset Hills. And I met with Wyatt McCray, and we've kind of struck up a relationship for Caneo Valley Film Festival III to help celebrate the 50th anniversary of Thousand Oaks. And the theme will all be Westerns. And the Virginian was shot in the Caneo Valley part of it, and Joel McCray was a star of that. But I'm here to plug the one that's coming up here, Caneo Valley Film Festival II, co-sponsored by the City of Thousand Oaks and California Lutheran University. And that's going to be on two days in two locations this year. Saturday, November 16th, at the Poise-Brant Forum at CLU. And we're opening with the 50th anniversary screening of It's a Mad, 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 Mad World, which is a comic epic classic. And it was shot -- they built a airport tower at Rancho Canejo Airport in Thousand Oaks, and I believe part of that is on the CLU campus now. At 4 o'clock, we're going to show Grapes of Wrath, starring Henry Fonda in 1940. And scenes were shot at the Janes-Canejo Ranch. And at 7:00 PM, Bonnie and Clyde, the final scene for Bonnie and Clyde, the famous slow-motion scene, was shot at the former Matter of Taste Restaurant in Agora. It's now Padre. And I worked there. And anyway, on Sunday, November 17th, we're going to be at the library this year, and we're going to show family classics. The original Tarzan, The Eight Man, shot in Lake Sherwood and using animals from Goble Lion Farm, which later became Jungleland. And Lassie Come Home, also based on a novel, as are Tarzan, Lassie, Grapes of Wrath. So, these are literary works as well as films. And it isn't just because they've been shot in the Canejo. These are classic films. So, it's a celebration of film, a cultural event that we're celebrating here with the tie for Thousand Oaks. Anyway, thank you very much. Hope anybody can make it. The library is free, and CLU, the cost is minimal. We had to pay to show the films at CLU. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we do have one last speaker, Nick Kidway.
I begin in the name of God, who is most beneficial, most merciful, Nick Kidway, resident of Niberry Park, still director of Concerned Citizens of Thousand Oaks, Honorable Mayor, It's a special day with the elections going on right now in many parts of the country, including Ventura. A council member has made a point that if people cannot donate or use their own money, that would be abridging their freedom of speech, and the highest court might rule against it. What a laughing, ridiculous thing to say because the Supreme Court is not going to get involved in City Council elections. However, however, this body continues to disgrace the U.S. Constitution and Americans' rights, which was done in '98 on the campaign ordinance where you cannot put two signs for a council member on your front yard or anywhere else in the country, in the city, unless they are 100 feet apart. And who's going to measure that? I have measured that a few times. It's not easy, and it's completely wrong. It's disgraceful. And despite having -- you know, the Star won't even cover the story because you had two study sessions on the campaign rules and changes. It's old hat. And the sad thing is that no one on the Council will even acknowledge that this is a problem and it should be addressed. And tonight, it will be over because the ordinance, which corrupts the process and encourages dirty money to elect people sitting there so they can vote for the favor of the special interests, the contractors, the people that give the money. In fact, you know, I was out of state, and I sent some information, and some is part of the green packet. But there's the excuse that there may be viruses. So, I believe the staff will not open Word documents or Excel spreadsheets. But the thing is, at least if you don't do it, at least write back and say, "Can you fax it?", which I would not have been able to. But at least let the people know. But treat taxpayers like trash. That's what I mean. You had all these military people over here. I hope they will listen. I mean, we've lost our country, if not all the way, but slowly it's going that way. Our children cannot find jobs over here. That's why, you know, how many people from our high schools are out of state right now? Most of them are. It's because of the government, unfortunately.
That concludes -- oh, actually, there is one more comment to be made, and that's by our Assistant Police Chief, Captain Fryoff. Good evening.
Madam Mayor, Council, City Staff, I just wanted to take a moment. When Tammy Helmoth was up here from the foundation recognizing all the sponsors, she forgot to mention her own company that was also a significant sponsor for the event, which is Caneo Awards. So, I wanted to give a shout-out to Caneo Awards. I know she's already left, but I know that she and her staff worked very hard to help put that event on, as well as the volunteers that we had, our volunteers in policing, our explorers and our staff that worked to put that event on. It's a long day for everybody. It's a lot of fun, and obviously, it raises a lot of money for the programs that we wish to do for community outreach to keep this one of the safest cities in the nation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. That concludes our public comments, and we now move to the consent calendar portion of our council meeting. Any items that need to be polled? Okay, are there -- okay, go ahead. Pardon me?
7E.
E, okay. And I will pull Items L, 7L, and 7M. Anybody wish to move the remainder of the calendar? Mr. Price, Mr. Price?
I'll move the remainder of the consent calendar.
Please vote. And we do have one speaker, and that would be Mr. Nick Kidway.
Excuse me, Mayor. The machine doesn't appear to be registering the votes. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. And the ordinance title for Item N is an Ordinance Amending Title V, Chapter 26 of the Municipal Code relating to Social Host citations.
Thank you. Mr. Adam, Item E.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. 7E has to do with the replacing of two compressed natural gas buses here in our fleet that have reached their end life. And I know the staff did extensive research on replacing these buses, put out different bids, even went to a couple of bus conventions, I believe, to look at the latest models. And I know we're going to downsize these two buses a little smaller than the two that they're replacing. And that's all well and good. My question is this, though. It's more of a philosophy, perhaps, philosophical-type question. In the last meeting, we were told that Thousand Oaks had the second-lowest ridership, bus ridership, in the county out of the 10 cities. And so, my question is this: Did we do a study on not replacing the buses? One of them, two of them? And what I'm getting at is, you know, it's the old bank for our buck. I mean, could we reallocate those resources into Dial Ride, which, as I understand it, is oversubscribed, a very popular service that we offer? Based on the low ridership that we're experiencing, do we need those two buses? Did we look at it from that kind of inverse relationship? Oh, hello.
Councilmember Adam, I'm going to ask our Transit Manager, Mike Hauser, to answer the question.
Councilmember, in answer to your question, some of those grant funds were specifically for bus purchases. And so, to not do that with those funds, we would have to give those funds back. I think to answer to your broader question is, these buses have an expected lifespan, and as they get older, the maintenance costs increase substantially over time, which we are experiencing now with these two particular buses. I think in the long term, even though this is a significant expenditure for the program, the long-term benefits are still valuable to us in terms of reducing our overall operations costs. As you have noticed, noted, ridership in general for us on the bus system is not as robust as we would like it, and we're working towards that. One of the proposals that staff is currently researching is to bring to Council the potential to increase the number of routes of service that we provide to provide broader coverage. And certainly, we would require more buses in order to be able to do that. And so, that is kind of the plan that we are moving towards right now. In terms of our Dial Ride ridership, we have more than sufficient vehicle capacity at this time.
Okay, well, that's good. So, what you're saying, then, is we may widen our routes to increase our ridership, then?
I think that that would be very beneficial. Over the course of the last four years, we have contracted the routes in order to improve their on-time performance and their frequency. But that has come at a loss of some ridership as a result of that. We targeted where the buses were being most heavily used, but that doesn't mean that there aren't other areas of the community where bus service would be used. And it was -- it's a constant balance, customer service versus ridership.
Yeah. Okay, well, that's good to hear that we have the intent to try to boost our ridership, especially with two new buses. Just one other quick question. After all the grants and everything are said and done, what did those buses cost us?
Those buses are close to a half a million dollars each.
Even with the grants that we've received?
No, I mean, that's the total expense. The cost to the city, in terms of that, will be approximately $50,000.
Oh, okay. All right. That's a pretty good deal. Million -- half a million dollar bus for 50,000 bucks. Okay. All right, well, thank you, Mr. Hauser.
Would you like to move approval? Mr. Price?
Thank you. I had intended to pull that as well, but for other reasons, although very good, very good questions there, Mr. Adam. When I read through this item, I just thought that this was a significant purchase, a million dollars. And my question to staff was, "Okay, where is all this money coming from?" And while it was in there, it was maybe not as easy to extract as my tired eyes like to find it. So, I asked staff if they could put together a chart. And there is, in fact, a chart in the supplemental packet today, and I appreciate you putting that together for me. And it calls out where the monies and the different grants come from. So, I just want to thank you for that.
Okay, who would like to move approval? Mr. Adam?
Move approval of 7E.
Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
And now, I will call Mr. Kidway.
Nick Kidway, Director Concerned Citizens of Thousand Oaks, Honorable Mayor. First of all, I am very disappointed. I don't know if five of you run the city or the city manager runs it like with an iron fist. Just like the Hooters Hearing, which never was voted upon, the taxpayers are losing $260, $2,000 because of an action by a city manager who just walked out. Regardless of the position on it, something like this, everything should be done just about in the sunshine. That's what that flag stands for. I guess a lot of you have forgotten what it is to be Americans and have an open form of government when we have NSA snooping around on all of us and all that and disgracing our nation. If TOTV can show that, it's kind of related. This is regarding the city manager's salary, TOTV. Thank you. This man just won the governor's race, and the president is bowing to him. The reason he's relevant here is that I believe he makes less than the city manager. Something is wrong. I mean, we have no common sense. 20 years ago, when I was fighting the city manager's raises, the salary was about $150,000, and with cost of living and other things. The bottom line is, the Star did a great job. It's $400,000. That's what this man is making, and he won't even ask permission from the mayor. In fact, oh, okay, well, they don't want to be here because their salaries are being discussed. I'm not that bright. But why is it on the consent calendar? This is not routine stuff. And why is the city manager's contract not part of the agenda packet? The city attorneys have showed up in the green packet, but you -- we have new council members, taxpayers. It should be part of -- I mean, it's very important. That's why in '98, the lifetime benefits of council members passed through because it was not discussed. It was in a binder. You know, Tea Party people are not here. Everybody criticizes Obamacare for the 30,000-page document that nobody read. I implore the council members, if you really want, especially those who want to be elected next year, that you should continue this to the next hearing, have the report presented, and deliberate, and put it as a staff report so that people can speak to it rather than a routine item put under the desk. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. All right. And now, Items L and M, which L deals with the city manager's contract agreement, and M is the city attorney's contract agreement. And I wanted to discuss both of them. And in the spirit of additional clarity, I just handed out a couple of papers to propose that we make a minor revision to the city manager and the city attorney contracts. And if you do look at them, it does -- there is a redline copy, which changes the wording to the -- in the second paragraph, that the city manager and city attorney in the second year of the agreements only would receive or will receive an year of the agreements only would receive or will receive an overall, a raise for an overall performance rating of exceeds expectations or better, whereas before it said satisfactory. Also wanted to make sure if this is exactly how the council thought we had negotiated. Okay. And that would be the revision that I am proposing to the contracts. Any comments regarding that? Mr. Adam.
Yeah, I think the revision is appropriate, and if I may, just to put this business into a little bit of context, we finished negotiation with our unions some months ago, and for the first time ever, we have required the employees of Thousand Oaks to make their own pension contributions. They have to pay for their pension contributions, which amounts to 7%, and we spread it over two years, three and a half percent each year. This is groundbreaking, because it hadn't been done before, and it's being done now, and I think it was the right way to go. Now, we're dealing with our city manager position and our city attorney position, and we are requiring the same things from them, that they pay their pension contributions for their retirement, it's a 7% contribution. The city had been paying it up till now, they will be paying it going forward, three and a half percent each year till it hits seven, and then it's on in perpetuity. I will say that in regards to city manager position, that position has not had a raise in five and a half years, and that's a long time. And based on the economics at the time, I think it was appropriate. And we'll also say that both positions were filled with exemplary performance. This contract, it really looks like it's going to go for two years, which reflects the two raises on the pension plan that we're requiring, three and a half percent each year. However, according to the human resources manager, the second year would be negotiable if the council chose to go into a closed session and negotiate that second-year raise. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. The only question I have, and I do direct your attention to the supplemental packet, I noticed this evening, from, it's a memo from Gary Rogers, Human Resources Director, which clarifies the actual net increase to the overall compensation to the city manager, which is less than originally reported. Could you please explain why the net gain is less, especially in the second year?
Sure, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The calculations incorporated, among other things, the adjustments associated with medical. And in January of 2014, the medical plan, particularly with the city manager, the plan that he is enrolled in, had a very substantial reduction in cost. Part of that cost was reflected in the 2013-14 year, but the full impact of that rather significant reduction wasn't experienced until 2014-15 fiscal year. The correction with respect to the staff report had to do with finance and HR getting together and reconfirming the numbers and discovering an error in our original calculation.
Okay, and so the city manager is receiving a net increase of 2.68% for the first year and a net increase of 1.1% for the second year. And why is this not also the case with the city attorney?
Because there are a number of different factors that go into the calculation of the total comp. Some of it, well, it includes, among other things, the annual salary, the city-paid PERS, the employee PERS, the deferred compensation, Medicare, medical, dental, vision, STD and life. The reduction in medical in and of itself was rather substantial for the city manager, which is why the impact was less in really both years. If that reduction in medical hadn't occurred, the percentages that you see for the city attorney would be somewhat comparable. I guess I should point out as well that the compensation adjustment for the city attorney is also less than the compensation adjustment for the city manager, so that certainly is also part of the difference between the total comp for each of the positions.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. I did not expect to see that in the supplemental packet. But suffice it to say that 2.7% increase for the first year and 1.2% for the second year is, in the overall picture, in my opinion, not a whole lot when you consider that the city manager has not taken a raise in over five years. So I think that that is fair. All right, with those changes, if there is consensus, I would like to move, Mr. Adam.
I just want to reiterate that. It's important to note that the overall raises granted were significantly diminished by the requirement that each position contributes to their pension plans and by the fact that their medical benefits were reduced.
And if there is consensus regarding the changes to the contract, then I would like to move approval.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. And now we go to item 8A, and that is dealing with the municipal code amendment to adopt California State Building Codes with local amendments. And that will be presented first by Dave Hewners, I believe. Yes, good evening.
Mayor, excuse me, I'd like to open the public hearing.
It is a public hearing, so you have to open it. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider, Agenda Item 8A, Municipal Code Amendment, MCA 2013-70247, to adopt the 2013 California State Building Code with local amendments. Speaker card is available for those wishing to address this public hearing, and we have no speaker cards.
Thank you, Mr. Hewners.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. The proposed municipal code amendment modifies the city building code. These changes are necessary to give the building division the ability to enforce the most current codes. These new codes will help ensure public health and safety, energy conservation, water and water conservation, and disabled accessibility. The state adopted codes are based on national model codes. Several state agencies have made amendments to create the California Building Standards Code. A few examples of the Department, are the Department of Housing and Community Development, Division of the State Architect, and the State Fire Marshal. Periodic updates to the state codes are needed for construction regulations to remain current with improvements in methods and materials of construction and improvements in building engineering and environmental factors. New state codes are adopted every three years. In this current cycle, the city is mandated to be enforcing the new state codes by January 1, 2014. In July of this year, the state agencies completed their amendments, and these codes have been made available to the city for amendment and adoption. We are permitted to make local amendments to the state code, provided these amendments are more restrictive and are based on findings that are specific to local climate, geology, or topography. A detailed description of these conditions showing the need for local amendments is included in the department's staff report and proposed ordinance. The ordinance will also repeal existing building code provisions and replace them with the 2013 edition of the California Building, Plumbing, Electrical, Mechanical, Residential, Green Building Standards, and the 2012 Uniform Solar Code. The proposed amendments contain both administrative and technical changes. Almost all of the local amendments are changes that are being carried over from previous code cycles. Staff has worked with the fire prevention district and the police department to develop several of these local amendments. For example, the building standards provisions in Chapter 41 were recommended by the police department. These rules help make buildings more secure from forced entry and provide improved security lighting. Working with the fire prevention district, the city has amended the building code to require more fire-resistant roof-covering materials than the minimum requirements in the state code. The ordinance also carries forward foundation design requirements. These requirements are found to be necessary because of the expansive soil in the Canal Valley. These local amendments have proven effective and have helped to ensure buildings are constructed on a firm foundation to compensate for the effects of expansive soil. Pages of the ordinance were provided for review and comment to the Chamber of Commerce, Building Industry Association, Ventura Chapter of American Institute of Architects, and the Ventura County Contractors Association. As of today, staff has not received any questions or comments. So in conclusion, it is recommended that the ordinance be introduced, including specific findings required to justify recommended local amendments. That concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hewners. Are there any questions by the council of staff? None? Okay, thank you very much. There are no speaker cards, so I will close the public hearing and open it up for a motion. Mr. Fox.
Sure, Madam Mayor, I'm going to move that the council approve the municipal code amendments to California State Building Code and all the language that's incorporated in that ordinance. Just a quick comment, most of the community would find this very dry, but as I went through, there's actually a lot of very important safety issues that are identified and called out in making Thousand Oaks consistent with the state building codes. And the staff has done a good job in recognizing and making sure that we're in line with the state and doing it in a way that, you know, I guess, before I move forward with the motion, to staff, when we do our user fees and we look for full-cost recovery, it would be my sense that these issues, some of these will be addressed in the upcoming budget, because there may be some dollars attached to this. Terms of changes in how we're enforcing some of these things and the requirements for permits that may be changed?
I don't believe it would impact any of the permit fees. Those were established recently and will carry forward into the next cycle.
Okay. In any event, staff's done a good job, and rest assured, if you build something or you're doing something in Thousand Oaks that's consistent with state standards, and while it may be problematic, it results in a safe construction and in a safe environment. So with that, I'm going to move for approval.
Any questions or comments regarding the motion? Please vote.
The motion carries five zero, and I have a long ordinance title to read. An ordinance adding to the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code, new chapters one, which is the building code, and new chapter six, mechanical code, seven, residential code, eight, plumbing code, 10, electrical wiring code, 14, uniform, solar energy code, and 16, green buildings standards code. Of Title VIII, relating to building division and adopting California Building, Residential, Green Building Standards, Mechanical, Plumbing, and Electrical Codes, 2013 edition, and Uniform Solar Energy Code, 2012 edition, by reference, and repealing existing chapters one, six, seven, eight, 10, 14, and 16 of Title VIII of the Municipal Code, MCA 2013-70247.
Thank you. Item 8B. Madam Clerk, I know I need to give you a little bit of a break to breathe here before announcing the next public hearing.
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider, Agenda Item 8B, Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, TFR, issuance of tax-exempt multifamily housing revenue bonds by area housing authority for Los Feliz Project Phase Two apartment project. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing, and we have one speaker card, I believe, for questions only, and the speaker is allowed five minutes.
Thank you. This presentation will be made by our Community Development Director, John Prescott, and there won't be any slides for this one, right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight's public hearing is required by federal law, and it relates to the proposed issuance of revenue bonds by the area housing authority to help finance the second phase of an affordable housing project on Los Feliz Drive. The first phase of 36 units is presently under construction, and the financing package that is proving to be a viable package for the second phase of 20 units does require the issuance of revenue bonds. The bonds are, would be obligations of the area housing authority itself and not the city. The city would have no financial exposure. However, under federal law, the local governmental agency in which the housing authority is located is required to hold a public hearing and approve the issuance of the bonds. Separately, the area housing authority will be bringing a request to the city council, probably at your next meeting on November 19, related to some additional financial assistance to the project from the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The housing authority has tried multiple approaches and many times to get the highly-desirable 9% tax credits, which will yield a large equity investment in the project by the tax credit investor unsuccessfully. They are now resorting to the 4% tax credits, which are pre-automatic. They expect to receive those in December, and that will allow the project to proceed seamlessly from phase one to phase two in the construction cycle. Phase one is already under construction. However, those 4% tax credits do not yield as much equity into the project, and therefore additional debt financing is needed. We do have representatives here from the housing authority in case you have specific questions of them, but it is our recommendation that the city council conduct the hearing and authorize the issuance of the revenue bonds by the housing authority.
Thank you, Mr. Prescott. We do have one speaker card for questions only. Are there any questions of staff by the council? I do have a question, Mr. Prescott. What, if any, liability or risks is the city exposing itself to in the wake of the Men and Mansions project?
By tonight's action, you're not exposing the city to any liability at all. I will, as we indicate in the staff report and as we will discuss probably at your November 19 meeting, there will be a request from the area housing authority for a loan from the city's housing trust fund to help finance the project. And that would be, that's a separate agenda item, which will be brought forward to you for your consideration, but it is not on the table at this time.
And as you stated, the project is already under construction.
The first phase is under construction. It's to everybody's advantage, particularly future residents of the first phase, and also from a cost standpoint, to have the second phase proceed as soon as possible so that the contractor does not have to leave the job site. It might have to be bid again, and then they would remobilize and come back onto the job site at the time when the first phase potentially was actually occupied. So it's, the housing authority is really trying everything they can to move forward and get that second phase constructed as soon as possible. And I think that, you know, it is worth noting that this kind of a situation is part of the fallout from the dissolution of redevelopment agencies by the state of California. Funding for affordable housing projects in general has really become much more competitive. Since then, the tax credit financing that's discussed in some detail in the staff report is really almost the only source of affordable housing funding out there right now. There are some trust funds, the city does have one, and we're lucky to be able to at least have some resources, but not merely on the scale that we had when we had but not merely on the scale that we had when we had a redevelopment agency.
Thank you. Any other questions? I will close the public hearing then and open it up for a motion. Mr. Price?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move approval of item 8B, the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, and the issuance of the tax-exempt multifamily housing revenue bonds by the area housing authority.
Okay. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. And now we move to item 8C, no, yes, 8C, Local Campaign Finance Reform, and that is a public hearing. Madam Clerk?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider agenda item 8C, Local Campaign Finance Reform Ordinance. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this hearing, and we have one card, and the speaker will be allowed five minutes.
Thank you, and I will turn it over to our city attorney, Tracy Noonan.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. The city clerk and I will have a brief presentation for you, since I think this is the third time you've had to listen to us talk about campaign finance reform. So I'll start with our city clerk.
Thank you. Following the work by a Citizens Blue Ribbon Committee in 1998, the city council adopted local campaign reform ordinance, and minor amendments have been made to that ordinance at that time, including increases to the contribution limit, addition of a requirement for candidates to submit bank statements once they met a $10,000 contribution threshold. The current code is shown in your agenda packet starting on page 127. At the city council's goal-setting session in March of this year, review of the local campaign ordinance was identified as a top priority for fiscal year 2013-14. So council held a study session on September 16th, and staff presented 17 areas for possible revision to the ordinance. City council provided input on 14 areas at that meeting and requested additional information in three areas, which was brought back on October 8th. Attachment two to your staff report, starting on page 135 of your agenda packet, has a matrix identifying city council's input from the September and October council meetings, and the city attorney will briefly review the changes that have been made.
Thank you. Tonight's staff has drafted an ordinance for introduction, which incorporates council's input to date. The ordinance includes revisions in the following areas. First, definitions previously redundant with state law have been either deleted or revised to be consistent with state law, including the monetary thresholds that defines committees. Second, a late filing fee provision has been added to address late filings required pursuant to the local ordinance. Third, enforcement components have been revised to direct issues to the district attorney or the FPPC. The ordinance still does allow citizens to take private right of action. It removes staff from investigative audit enforcement and remedy matters, excluding those that are required by state law. It removes the additional bank statement filing provision when contributions reach $10,000. It clarifies that contribution limits do not apply to independent expenditure committees, ballot measure committees, or other committees not controlled by candidates. It identifies a new contribution limit of $500 with future adjustment in odd-numbered years, consistent with the CPI, and also includes a reevaluation of the limit in five years, which would occur in December of 2018. And finally, it revises the aggregation definition to be consistent with state law. The new draft ordinance starts on page 148 of your agenda packet. Staff is recommending introduction of the ordinance this evening, and if introduced, the second reading and adoption would be scheduled for November 19th. If the ordinance is adopted November 19th, the new regulations will go into effect on December 20th. Staff is available for any questions.
Thank you. Mrs. Noonan, any questions? None? Okay. Well, who would like to make the motion? Oh, we do have one speaker, Mr. Kidway.
Nick Kidway, what a difficult job it is to remember that you have not a speaker but a taxpayer, a voter. It's a lost cause. I agree. I mean, it's a total waste of time. At least there's some activity on the Thousand Oaks Star website, but no one coming here means I should be home with my family. It's just completely, people are just so apathetic. It's not even funny. I mean, everybody is, these tablets are so nice, right? You can be anywhere and just, you don't have to do anything, just, you don't have to come to council meetings, you don't have to listen to them. The issue has been that there's too much money spent for this race, and the council has done anything to reduce the role of money, and especially the money by special interests. I worked a little bit with Ed Jones. I'm disappointed that he's not participating actively. He had 600-plus signs out people's homes, and these were residents, longtime residents, good people. The donations they gave was 25, 35. $50 was a big donation. Nobody in their right mind, especially in today's materialistic society, gives $380 without expecting something in return. And now to get $500, we've lost our government. Nobody, the papers won't print anything. We just gave a huge raise. What can you say? And there's no one on the council that addresses the issues or even tackles them properly. Just one example, since the internet is there, it was such a wonderful thing if used properly. And I'm from Fullerton, and I'm friends with Bruce Whitaker, who's the mayor right now, and they have a limit of 1,000 per, for contributions. I don't think anybody has ever received more than, spent more than $20,000 in Fullerton to win a race, and he spent $13,000, $14,000, something like that. We've always had a problem with the car dealers in 98. That's why we had the campaign ordinance, because they gave $5,000 and $10,000 and $5,000 to a candidate who won. And in 2010, they tried to do the same thing, and by fluke, city attorney came forward and nabbed them, but nothing was done. The city clerk, who was responsible for doing it, I have it in writing, I sent it to you folks also, she said, "It's not my job to do this, to enforce this," when it's part of the 98 ordinance. So it's not worth the ink that, these things are printed on when there's no support. In fact, you know, I, you know, I agree, I'm wasting my time coming over here because you have the un-American part that was passed, and I'm the victim of it, that I had two signs in my front yard in 98, and that, they and the others were taken to the city yard. And the crime was that they were too close to each other. What can you do when you lose democracy because people don't want to participate, they are lulled into submission? This is what the imperialists did in China. They gave, the British, they gave opium free to the people, and, but China came back with a vengeance right now. I just hope that in the time of my grandchildren, this country will rise up again to the standards and the dream and the vision that the founders had, that I saw when I landed on these shores in 1971. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Next speaker is Clint Matkovich.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of city staff, ladies and gentlemen. Clint Matkovich, lifetime resident of Thousand Oaks. I actually decided to speak here about a minute and a half ago. I wasn't expecting, kind of going on the fly here, I don't have any prepared remarks, but I was a candidate last fall for the CRPD Board of Directors after spending about 16 years or so involved in local government and volunteering my time. And I spent about $285, maybe $290 bucks on my campaign received, and I don't mean to sound arrogant, I'm very appreciative of the amount of votes that I had, and I don't want people to misunderstand what I'm saying here. I received nearly 10,000 votes on just about $280-some dollars or so. And I think that if you think about the way that the national elections are going, the Supreme Court, not too long ago, decided that corporations are people too, kind of a cute way of putting it, I guess, but I don't agree with it. I think it needs to be more about the message. And I would challenge all of you, we're taking a rest before the next campaign year, next year, and some of you are up for reelection. And I think in general, I think that politicians and TO need to be more about the message than the money. California is just such a sad state of affairs. We spend so much money on elections, it's just disgusting. I trash more than half of the campaign material that I get. I don't care what party it's from, it's such garbage. It's just more about slamming your opponent, and it's more, and it's not about the message, and what are we going to do for the people? And I'm not accusing any of you guys of doing that, I'm speaking in general terms here. I think that in general, we need to make it more about the message and not about how much money we have. I think we should roll this back. Let's be able to accept less money. Let's not up it. Let's keep, maybe make it lower. So let's, my general message here is, let's make it more about the message, more about the people, and not about how much money we can put in our war chest when we run for office. Thank you.
Thank you. We don't have any public speakers anymore regarding this, so I will go ahead and close the public hearing and open it up to a discussion and/or motion. Mr. Adams?
Yes, thank you. Well, I can assure you that the 1998 Blue Ribbon Panel that was appointed to review our campaign finance laws and the conclusions they came to were kept almost completely intact to what we're going to pass this evening, what I assume we're going to pass. We made a few minor revisions that I think were for the best. We increased the contribution limit to $500. It was at $380. It had not been increased in 15 years, and other than CPI adjustments, and after all, I mean, we have to account for inflation and the cost of elections, and I think the increase was relatively minor. We kept the six-month fundraising window, though, for those of you that are adverse to long campaigns, so they won't be any longer than the six months. And the $500 is a maximum. I mean, you can give considerably less if you choose, and I know all candidates will be happy to take less if that's your inclination, so. And I think a few of the other things we do, did, will encourage candidates and make it simpler to run for election in the city of Thousand Oaks. So with that, I would like to move that we repeal the old ordinance, Chapter 13 to Title I, and re-adopt the new ordinance that we crafted. And by the way, I was very heartened by the give and take that the council members had in coming up with this ordinance, and appreciative of the willingness to compromise by my fellow council members, and I think that that was good. So, yeah, repeal Chapter 13, Title I, and re-adopt the new ordinance, Chapter 13, Title I, which would revise the campaign contribution limits and other additional reporting and disclosure requirements.
Thank you. Any comments regarding the motion? None? Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0, and the ordinance title is an ordinance repealing Chapter 13 of Title I of the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code, and thereafter re-adopting Chapter 13 of Title I of the code to impose revised campaign contribution limits and certain additional reporting and disclosure requirements for city election campaigns.
Thank you. Now we go to item 9A, Department Reports, and that will be presented by our Public Works Director, Jay Spurgeon, on our Water and Wastewater Long-Term Asset Management Plan. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. We're going to be talking about our proposal for water and wastewater financial plans, and also talk about long-range asset management plans. This is not something we've done in the past. We looked ahead, actually looking out many, many years, significant assets that we have in water and wastewater. With me on the dais tonight is Colin Chung from GHD, one of our consultants. He'll be talking about the asset management portion, and then Sanjay Ghar from Reftellus Financial Consultants, who prepared our financial plans. Also, Cliff Finley, our deputy director, is with us tonight as well. These gentlemen are truly the experts in this area, so get ready. We're, we got quite a bit of information to give to you tonight. We're going to talk about the asset management plan first, the inventory, how we valued it, risk assessment, and then some recommendations, and then go over water and wastewater financial plans, the challenges in working through those plans, rate setting, reserve policy, connection fees, and then cost of service analysis that we needed to do for wastewater. We own $1.3 billion of assets in our water and wastewater systems. These are replacement values. If we had to go out and replace the systems today, this is what we would have to spend. Just at Hill Canyon Treatment Plan alone, $140 million almost. So we have significant assets that we need to pay attention to. We need to plan these for replacement, repairs, rehabilitation as we go forward. This is, in keeping with the theme, that we are a built-out city. We're a maturing city. We have infrastructure that's going to age. So the, this is a snapshot of where we're going with our recommendations, just so you could see this upfront. We're going to recommend $6.5 million asset replacement funding per year between the two systems, adjustment to wastewater rates of about 5% per year. Water is at 3%. When we add the pass-through for the wholesale water cost increase, that's about 7%. And then some adjustments to our water and wastewater connection fees, and we'll be talking more about that. Before we get into the details, let me just give you a snapshot of how we are currently comparing to our sister agencies. You can see where we're at currently with wastewater rates, 2545 are proposed, first year, 2685. Not a big increase, obviously, and we're still well toward the bottom of our other agencies in terms of those rates. Our connection fee actually is a downward adjustment we're proposing. We'll talk more about that, from $10,000 to about $7,300 per connection, and you can see how we compare to other agencies there. Water rates for a typical monthly residential cost, currently we're about $83. Proposed is going up about $6. And you can see, again, we're about middle of the pack. Now, these are compared to existing rates with these other agencies, and we know Cal Water, Cal American, City of Simi Valley, others are also going through rate increases. So we will compare even more favorably in the coming year as those agencies and companies do their rate cases as well. And then for water connection, this is an adjustment upward to 7,400, as you can see here. We'll have more discussion about that. So now I'm going to turn it over to Colin, and he's going to walk us through the asset management plan.
Thank you, Jay. Madam Mayor, the distinguished members of the council, I greatly appreciate the opportunity to come here and share our results on the asset management plan, and I'm very happy to report that this is actually a plan that was incorporated utilizing all the staff from the field level all the way up to the management, and really brought in their knowledge and expertise, along with our guidelines, to put this plan together. As many of the cities are transitioning from development to management mode, a lot of the leading-edge cities are relying on asset management to understand the future requirements and to develop a sustainable management plan. So what is this asset management plan? Well, it's a long-range planning document that helps to identify and document the assets owned and managed, define the level of service you're providing with your assets, really understand and assess the overall risk of the asset, and to document and understand the future long-range funding requirements to sustain the delivery of these assets. The goal of the asset management plan is to really provide a data-backed justification for the funding requirements, but also for the funding requirements, but also to document the current state of the asset and understand the future requirements. The key asset management plan components include asset inventory, condition assessment, asset valuation, development of strategic and strategic goals and objectives, the level of service, assessment of risk, assessment of lifecycle costing, and understanding of the future needs. For all your facility asset, working hand in hand with the staff, we were able to go visit and identify in inventory all assets in your pump stations, lift station, treatment plant, and also, at the same time, document it with photos, and provide the data, and perform the condition assessment. So, within the asset management, there are many components, but I want to just focus on two components. One is called risk assessment, and the other one is lifecycle costing. The risk assessment methodology is composed of two major components, the probability of failure and consequence of failure. Asset by asset, and you have over 50,000 water and wastewater asset, we calculated the risk score for each of the asset. The probability of failure gives you an indication of timing to failure. When will these assets fail? On the contrary, the consequence of failure gives you an indication of when these assets fail, what kind of impact will it have to the society, to the environment, and from an economic perspective. So we gave a rating for each of these criteria, and put together, developed a risk methodology, and assigned the risk score for each asset in the asset register. The next one that I wanted to kind of give you a brief review on is the lifecycle costing methodology. Now, I want to take you back, and when an asset is first put into service, as time progresses, the asset will deteriorate. It will typically deteriorate in an exponential function. As the asset deteriorates, the probability or the likelihood of failure increases, depending on the functionality and the location of the asset, the consequences of failure stays constant. And as I mentioned in the risk assessment methodology, putting together, what we have is risk. Now, from a manager's perspective, depending on the risk profile of the asset, you want to manage it aggressive or very conservative, so you establish the minimum condition acceptable profile, and also maximum risk you're willing to take on that asset. And what that does is triggers an investment decision of either replacement or rehabilitation. Now, this is just a snapshot in time, but most of the assets that you own have a very long useful life, so this whole process repeats periodically throughout the life of the asset. And this is how a lifecycle cost is captured. In addition, you have the operations costs, you have the maintenance costs, and you have the total cumulative cost of ownership for that asset. We were able to calculate the lifecycle cost for asset by asset for over 50,000 assets and put all that element together. So I'm going to touch up on the asset inventory. First of all, you have about 230 miles of water pipe, 16 reservoirs, 15 pump stations, two wells. And most of these assets were, started developing in early '60s. There was a peak in late '70s, early '90s, and early 2000s. And as I've told before, there's over 55,000 assets in your water and wastewater systems alone. In the wastewater system, there's about 410 miles of wastewater pipes, two lift station, and one large treatment plant, the Hill Canyon Treatment Plant. So together, as Jay mentioned, the total is about $1.3 billion of replacement cost, where the water system's about $490 million, and the wastewater infrastructure system is about $840 million. I'm very happy to note that the water system, as well as the wastewater system, in general are in good state of condition, especially the water condition as represented in green, yellow, and red, in terms of the risk profile. Over your, 90% of your assets in water system came out with green or very low risk profile. On the wastewater side, then we had about 60% as low risk, 30% as medium risk, and about 10% of your assets in the high risk, which meant that it will require a rehabilitation replacement in the future, near future, and the impact of failure of those assets will be pretty high to the city. And most of these assets included reservoirs and some of the process assets in the Hill Canyon Treatment Plant. For your distribution and collection system, what we were able to do, for segment by segment, hydrant by hydrant, valve by valve, we were able to produce a risk profile in the GIS, Geographic Information System, and introduce it as a map, and identify that and assign the risk score for every asset as represented by the sample graph that we have. Now, for each of the asset, when you consolidate everything together, year by year, we were able to come up with an estimated funding requirement for that particular year. And here's an analysis of a hundred-year analysis for the both water and wastewater system. And as indicated by the results below, the 10-year average and up to 25-year average, we're looking at about $6.5 million a year in investment that you'll need to make to sustain the delivery of the asset. And it's not until about the mid-year 2040s when we expect to see a lot of investment required to help replace the water and wastewater pipes and the infrastructure. Now, here's a representation where it's more broken down by system, by facility, and by, you know, the pipes, and also the facility, and I won't go into detail on this. One of the key elements of a financial plan is to help identify, and is the incorporation of long-range capital requirements. And we were able to produce these results for the asset management plan, and then provide that information to feed the financial plan, which Sanjay will discuss. So thank you very much for the opportunity to talk about asset management plan.
Colin, thank you. Madam Mayor, distinguished council, I'd like to present Raftelis Financial Consultants Study associated with the wastewater financial plan and the water financial plan. I'll be first talking about wastewater. What are the challenges that managers face when managing a water and wastewater system? In a lot of ways, metaphorically, it's similar to doing a long-term sailing trip in the sense that you want to anticipate what's the environment we're going to be facing. What are the factors that we need to be ready for, the contingencies, so that we're ready for those environmental factors? Well, in the wastewater and water system, there's a couple. First, Colin mentioned aging infrastructure. You have those out there. Fortunately, they're not an immediate feature, but they're out there, and they are out there. The other one is fluctuating capital costs. You do experience that, where your CIP or your capital improvement plan fluctuates based on what needs to be replaced. In addition, we have risk and liability. Those are those risk factor that Colin talked about. There are those in your environment, and we need to make sure we are ready for them in case they occur. And unfortunately, we also have increased regulatory demands. Those regulatory demands can be twofold. It can be conservation goals, such as there's one called SBX 7-7 you may be familiar with, which is a target about a water use by 2020. There could be also, on the wastewater side, NBDs requirements associated with discharge. Unfortunately, that's not the complete story. There is another side of the story, which is your constituents. What do they want? Because besides managing this system, your ties are, your hands are somewhat tied. What your constituents want is they want rate stability. They want affordability, especially given, you know, the economic situation we just came out of. Equity is a concern, making sure the rates are fair and equitable. And of course, now, one of the newer things is environmental stewardship, making sure that we're providing, we're being good steward, we're being sustainable, both financially and in the long term with the environment. Given these challenges, it's very important to have an asset management study and a financial plan in place to help you navigate through this. And what this study is, is really about that, navigating through these challenges. So I also want to talk a little bit about the methodology, or sort of the framework of how do you do cost-of-service analysis on wastewater rate studies. And a lot of the steps here are also associated with water. The first is developing a financial plan. A financial plan is really about how much cash do I need to generate on an annual basis to meet my operating costs, to meet my capital improvement costs, and also to meet certain targets, such as reserve requirements. On the wastewater side, you do have debt, so there's a legal requirement called a coverage ratio that you want to meet to make sure you're not in technical default. There's pros and cons, as you can see on the slide that I have about issuing debt. But the key thing here is, is how much cash do we need so that we can maintain the system and be fiscally responsible? The second is cost of service. Cost of service is required for a couple of reasons. The first is because of Proposition 218 in Government Code, Section 54999, which basically stipulates that there needs to be a nexus between our, the cost that we incur in providing that service and the fee. If we don't do that, then it becomes a tax. And we could also potentially be an illegal lawsuit, potentially. The other reason why we want to do this is because it's just, it's just fair, in the sense that we're providing rates that are fair, and we know they're equitable. On the wastewater side, what we do is, is we look at the strength and the flow of the system. We look at how much each customer generates in the strength, which we can say in non-technical terminology is the Yuck Factor, and then the flow, which is how much is being discharged. The last is rate structure. And really, we're talking about here is what are the goals and objective with the rate structure, such as affordability or revenue stability. So, one of the other things that we also looked at is reserve policies, and developing what is the right reserves, given the situation that you have, and your unique situation. Why do we need reserves? Well, there's a couple of reasons. One is, as I mentioned, water and wastewater is highly capital-intensive. Second is the capital fluctuates, as I mentioned, and there's also that risk and liability of potentially of an asset failing. The other aspect of reason why we want reserves is that it helps us maintaining a good credit rating. On the wastewater side, you do have debt, so it helps us with that. And in the future, if we wanted to issue debt, it helps us make sure that we have a good interest rate, which will help us with the cost of issuance. So what are the types of reserves out there? The first is the operating and maintenance reserve. This is basically just to have enough cash on an annual basis to meet the cash flow requirement. You have revenues coming in. Sometimes they're cyclical, or not cyclical, they're monthly, they're seasonal, and your expenditures are a certain factor, too, that comes in. The other one's the rate stabilization. That's basically to offset any increases that could occur from third-party increases, or it could be from decrease in water sales. The other one's emergency reserves. This helps us, basically allows utility to provide unirreproachable service in event of a natural disaster or facility failure. And then there's capital improvement. This is really a cash flow requirement, so that we have the money available for awarding the contract for these large capital improvement plans, and also for timing. Another aspect associated with reserves is the rating agencies' perspective and what they look at. What they look at is something called days of cash on hand, and basically, they want you to have a certain amount. These are medium targets associated with them that we see. Many agencies, sometimes by meeting those, they even exceed what the credit rating is. So this is just the medium targets. Based on this information, and based on, you're now looking at the risk profile associated with your agency, these are what the reserve targets that we're recommending. We're basically, operating is 25%, which is $3.7 million. The emergency reserve would be basically the cost of the chlorine, contact chamber, and the filter-influenced pump, which GHD determines the one of the most critical assets that you have, which is $2.4 million. And then your CIP or capital R and R. The total is $15.2 million. Next, once we've determined the reserve, is, well, what's the financial consequence of that? You know, what are we seeing in the future? What are sort of the cost increases? And what we have was developed a financial model. It's Excel-based, which is a deliverable that the city has, that we've provided. What this shows is different snapshots of the model. So this graphical interface right here shows you the revenue increases. As you notice, doesn't show anything, because this is the status quo. We're saying no rate increase. What would happen over the next five years? So we have no rate increase over there. The next chart shows the operating position. These bars are operating costs. And there's a line there. You'll see on the top, it's a green line. The green line basically shows the revenues coming in. One of the things that you'll notice is that the green line is going through the bars. So that's getting really evident in 2018, 17, and 16. And then you'll see a little red section down below. That's basically saying we're not meeting our operating costs. Basically, where we're projecting out in the future years is that the revenues that we're generating won't be sufficient to pay for the cost of turning on the lights. Now, it's also important to note that there has been no rate adjustments for the wastewater system for nine years. Now, the other information that we take into account is the capital expenditures. This capital expenditure is the CIP from the master plan study, and also the asset R and R. The model, again, has the ability to issue debt if we wanted to. And in this scenario here, we're saying we're going to do everything based on paygo or cash. And then the next chart shows the, basically, the ending fund balance with the reserve targets that I mentioned, and then the ending balances. Wastewater is a healthy reserve balance, but as you can see in the outlying years, especially in fiscal years 16, 17, and 18, we're starting to be well below the reserve targets. Given that information, this is what we're recommending. Basically, what we're recommending is a 4% increase in revenue, and then a 5% increase after that. Now, I used the word revenue specifically. I didn't use the word rates, as you might have noticed, because we're talking about how much revenue we need to generate. I'm going to talk about rates in a second, because there is a slight difference between the two. Based on that information, as you can see in the next chart, we're meeting our operating position. Then, the green line now shows you the proposed revenue, while the red line shows with the current revenues. And as you can see, the green line's above the bars, so we're meeting our operating position. And this financial plan, we're suggesting no debt issuance is needed because of the healthy reserves that you have, which is, and that capital improvement is still the same. And then you see the ending fund balance. And as you can see, in the outlying years, we're slightly below the ending fund, the target. I think by, when it all gets done, you will be slightly above it. But this is based on our reasonable estimates of capital expenditure and O and M increase. The next chart shows the 15-year horizon, what's going to happen over the next 15 years. And as you can see, what we're showing here is, is basically, the first year is a 4% increase in revenue, and then after that, six years a 5%, and then four years a 4%. We're also showing here, in the green coordinates over there down in the bottom-left corner, $12 million issuance in fiscal year 20, as based on the information that we have in the model. And as you can see, we're basically meeting our target reserves in each of the years. But I think that's very good, in the sense that most agencies that I work with on the wastewater side do see much more of an increase than this increase that we're showing right here. Next, I want to talk about cost of service and what that is. Well, cost of service, as I mentioned before, is that nexus requirement, so that we're providing costs based of how much it costs to provide that service. As I mentioned, there's a reason why we do that. It ensures that rates are equitable and fair. There's these legal requirements, Prop. 218, Government Code, Section 54999. Government, actually, Code, Section 54999 states that you should do this every 10 years. So it's been a while, so we've done this analysis. And it also ensures there's no cross-subsidy between customers. Now, when we do this analysis, we take into account the current consumption pattern that's occurring with your customers, and it's changed. So one of the things that we look at is we look at the flows that go into the treatment plant, and then we look at the number of customers that you have, and we look at, well, what's the flow? What's a reasonable amount of flow and waste or strength that's coming from your customers? One of the things that we've noticed, and we see this throughout the industry, is that consumers are conserving water. They're doing, we've asked them to conserve. There's new appliances, end-use appliances out there, whether it's dishwashers, washing machines, toilets. And because of that, we see less and less wastewater flows going into the treatment plant. However, the strength factor, the amount of soap we're using and all the other stuff, is staying the same. So the strength factor is actually increasing relative to the flow. After that, the next thing we do is we look at the operating costs, we look at the capital improvement, and we determine how much of the cost is associated with treating, how much of it's flow-related, and we can allocate that information. And based in all these three fact, based on these two factors, we can actually calculate the new rates. When we do that, it changed, things changed. As I mentioned, the flow has changed. And so, there's something called equivalent resident unit, or ERUs. That is the measurement that we use. Well, that definition has changed. And because that has changed, it affects all the other different customers. Here's are the new rates that we are proposing with the revenue adjustments. One of the things you'll notice that residential rates do increase basically by $1.40 next fiscal year, February 2014. This includes the additional revenues. Now, one of the things, as you look at this, you'll see some customers see a significant, looks like, appears to have a significant looks like, appears to have a significant increase, and you may ask yourself, what's going on here? Well, some of these customers, such as schools, for instance, their number of units that they have actually have dropped because of that new definition that I mentioned about the ERUs. So it's, another way to look at it is, look at the customer impact associated with it, which shows how different customers' share will change. So for instance, residential will see a 5.5% increase as a total of their bill, or $1.40 is another way of looking at it. Next, I'd like to talk about connection fees. What are connection fees? Well, connection fees are basically a one-time capital charge for new development to pay for the proportional share of costs of, of the capitals that they're going to be using. As Jay mentioned, your, your infrastructure needs or requirements are changing. You're a built-out city. So we look at, basically, what's the cost of a customer joining in and enjoying the assets you have provided. One of the things that we do look at is, is we look at the cost of the benefits associated with, these are the legal requirements associated with the fee, with the benefits and the fee, and also the proportionality. The next component we look at is the system buy-in approach, given that you are built out. This basically recognizes that existing users have developed and maintained the system, and new development basically benefits from it. So we look at the value of the system, and we divide that by the current EDUs. Based on that methodology, we get this new fee, where basically, what we're suggesting is that the fee to drop from a current $10,264 to $7,288. Now, with water, financial plan, there's a lot of similarities here, so I'm just going to be a little bit more quicker. Well, on the reserve policies, what we're recommending are the following reserves. 25% of the operating budget are 5.2. The emergency is basically a replacement called the water reserve, the capital. And as you can see, the reserve target we're recommending is $15.5 million. A couple of other recommendations is, is that since the city, or the, the city is 100% dependent on Keyagis Municipal Water District as the sole water supplier, you should utilize something called AB 3030, which allows pass-throughs to occur. So when they automatically increase their rates, we can do a pass-through and automatically pass-through that. We determine what the component of that is in your rates, and I'll be showing that to you in a second. The other component that we're recommending is, is that the city establishes a capital R and R charge that basically funds this R and R program. Basically, what we're suggesting is that we set aside $3.5 million to fund that, which is basically 73 cents. Here's the, basically, the status quo associated with the financial plan, the four boxes that I showed prior. The first box, quadrants, as you see, there's no revenue increase or adjustments, so things are blank there. The next one is the operating financial plan. The green line is increasing because of the pass-throughs. We are meeting our operating position there. However, in the, the next quadrants, the green lower one, as you can see, we do have significant CIP requirements or capital improvement, especially in fiscal year 16. Because of that, we're not, we're basically having a negative fund balance out in 16, 17, and 18. Because of that, what we're recommending is a rate adjustment of 3% each year. This includes the pass-through, the pass-through is addition to that, and I'll be talking about that in a second. And also, what we're suggesting potentially is a $24 million issuance in fiscal year 16. In fiscal year 15, you would reevaluate that to see whether you really need that issuance or not. But as of right now, that's what we're recommending. One of the things you'll notice is, is the bottom quadrants, is that we're meeting our reserve requirements in all the years, and slightly, we're slightly below in fiscal year 15. This is the 15-year forecast. As you can see, what the city is responsible for, control, is only a 3% rate adjustment and then a 2% after that. And then you see the issuance that we have in 16. Based on that information, these are the proposed minimum domestic use rates that we're suggesting for 14 and 15 for a single-family and non-residential. And these are the rates that we're suggesting. What we have done is, is we have determined the pass-through component associated with that. We know that the pass-through for this year is 18 cents. Based on the most relevant information that we have available, best information, we're anticipating that will be 36 cents in, in 2015. Based on that information, we can determine what the customer impact here is. And this is a usage analysis, where we show different usage levels, whether 10, 18, 25, 35, and 15, 18 is your average customer. And this excludes the pass-through of imported water, and this is just the city, and as you can see, it's a 3% increase. Now, what is it with the city, with the imported costs? So with, including, with an imported cost, as you can see, it's basically a 7% increase. The 4% of that is the imported cost, 3% of it is yours. The next thing is the water connection fee. We did that analysis. In this analysis, what we looked at is the same methodology, the buy-in approach. As you'll note, it does, we are recommending an increase to $7,412. One of the things to think about is, is that if you combine the two together, the water and wastewater, you'll note that there's no total increase, because one has basically dropped by 3,000, wastewater, water has increased by 3,000. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Council, for your attention. Here's our recommendation for tonight. We need adoption of the financial plans and setting of the public hearing, which would be the next step as we, when we come back in January. In between there is a 45-day Prop 218 notice, where we send out the rate adjustment proposals, and then people can protest in writing during that 45-day period. So we're happy to answer any questions now.
Thank you, Mr. Spurgeon, Mrs. Irwin.
Now, that was a very detailed report, and impressed with the asset management plan and the financial plan. How often do we do these?
The financial plans, we do every two years, in conjunction with our two-year budget cycle. The asset management plan, we have never done before. So this is the first time we've done this level of detailed review of our $1.3 billion in water wastewater assets.
Well, it is impressive, and it brings up, I had a question on that, but I first, just kind of a, a real, I don't know if you know the answer to this one, but when I look at the water rate comparison chart on page three, most of these cities, or, and most of these services, get their water from Keyagis, right? I mean, maybe, not, not Los Virginas, but how, why is Simi Valley so much lower than everybody else?
Yes, they're all, we're all on imported water. Even Los Virginas, they are actually a contract, just like Keyagis, but, but they're 100% import as well. Simi, I think, to be honest, the, they've just not provided for sufficient asset replacements and capital needs there. Their, their systems are struggling. My colleagues there kind of talk about that with me, and so, you know, they're, maybe they're, they're paying, they're able to pay their bills, but they don't have the reserves levels that we have, and they don't have certainly the plan for asset replacement going forward.
They, they really are outlier there. Okay, so with the asset management plan, I guess what, what I would look at that seems most concerning is for the, these 11% of our assets in the facilities area are at high risk. So it was, so is that, is that something that you had expected? And when you talk about high risk, how quickly does it have to be fixed? Do we, I mean, is this sort of on an emergency basis? It's for, I'm sure most of us on City Council, that's a disconcerting number.
I'll have Colin also comment on this. I don't think this is actually bad news. I think this is actually very good news. The fact that all of our pipeline infrastructure, which is the, the top part of the chart here, essentially all are low-risk. But the other, the other facilities that, that we're talking about here, these are, these are the wear and tear, these are the pumps, these are things that have, maybe are getting close to their useful life. Now, we have to, of course, program those for cap, for upgrades or replacements, and we're, we're doing that or will do that. But, you know, Colin, you can jump in here, too. But I don't think, actually, this is a bad picture at all.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out. And as I mentioned, a lot of these assets in the red zone are driven by your treatment plant, and as Sanjay mentioned, the need for the chlorine contact chamber and the, the filter influent pumps. And these are the assets that were being, that, back, put in together in the late '70s, early '80s, and the useful life of those assets have expired, and there's a critical element to the overall process of the treatment plan. In the water side, there are a lot of refurbishment needs for the reservoirs, where a lot of the steel tanks, you got to take them out of service, go in there and recode them, and then, you know, refurbish these reservoirs in order to deliver the, the service requirements of those assets. And a lot of the reservoirs been put in in the '70s, in the '60s, as well as, you know, and it's those assets that are nearing 40 years old, you know, that are requiring some capital attention at the moment.
And I guess that this, going back to Mr. Spurgeon, is this kind of the outcome you would have expected for the facilities?
I'm going to have Cliff jump in here, too, because he was much more involved in this.
Yes, just to answer your question, this 11%, most of these items are already programmed in our five-year CIP, and some of them in the next two-year CIP. So actually, we were, we were quite pleased, when you dig into the details on this, you find out that these are the items that we already have programmed. So, again, we were very pleased. We've anticipated these need repair, and this, this represented, it kind of showed us that we're online with what we want to do.
All right, and I, so that sounds, sounds good, that it's all anticipated. And, and I do want to go back to what Mr. Spurgeon said. It, it is very impressive that the pipes are all at low risk, or very few of them, they're at medium risk. If, if we look at our neighboring city, Los Angeles, over, you know, a few years ago, where they had pipes bursting all over the place, it's, it's very gratifying to see that the infrastructure has been kept up like this in Thousand Oaks. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Price had the finger up first.
Actually, I, I'll save it for comment later on.
Mr. Adam, then.
Yes, good evening. So, consumers are being encouraged to conserve water here in the city, in the state, in the country, around the world. It's a dwindling resource. But what the upshot of that, I've been reading lately, is that conserving water, the reward for that is higher rates, because the purveyors are selling less water, so to make up for that sale of less water, they got to raise rates. Is that what's happening here in our city?
Actually, I would say, not to a very large degree, within our own system. The costs and operating parameters that we have direct control over, the cost increases for those, especially if you look back in, in history, have been very, very minimal. What really drives us, and what most of these costs adjustments are due to, is the imported costs. Now, the increase in imported water costs may be somewhat more due to that very fact, although I think it's probably more so has to do with environmental restrictions in the delta, as well as their aging infrastructure, because the state water project is coming up on, you know, 50-plus years old as well. If you look back over the last several years, our imported water costs cumulatively have increased what's passed through, what we would pass through to our customers, about 42% cumulatively, and this is about a three-year, three or four-year period. Our rates have actually increased 43% in that same time period, which means, over those few years, our increases have only amounted to 1%. So there's a, there's a very, very distinct difference between what we have control over and what we don't have. I think it's testimony, testament to how well managed the systems are, how well our staff do in terms of operating, maintaining our systems. I would, I would say, back to your original question, probably no for us, although we see in neighboring systems, the answer is much different.
Yeah, oh, that's good to hear. And we import what percent of our water?
100.
That's what I thought. 100% of our water is imported. Yeah. All right, thanks, Ms. Spurgeon. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. I do have a question. The, this is by far the best analysis of our waste and water and wastewater and asset management that I have ever seen. Obviously, in terms of the assets, it's the first one, but we've had master plans in the past before that are being updated on a regular basis. But the percentage, to me, that you're recommending, year after year after year, 4%, 5%, and whatnot, to me, sounds reasonable, perhaps too reasonable. Is it something, do we take into consideration any emergencies that the city may experience as a result of an earthquake or anything like that, where we would have to rebuild in certain portion of the infrastructure?
We did, and the reserve policies did take into account the critical assets, so we did take that into account, within reason. You know, there are, I mean, we, there is, you know, if, if, if the end of the world occurred, and since a really big earthquake happened, then we would expect most likely some other federal funding to come in to help you. But this is within reason, what we would expect it to be for a rainy day. So yes.
Okay, so our, our reserves would be built up sufficiently?
Right now, you currently have the reserve, especially on the wastewater side. On the water side, I have to confirm that again, you do have it already. So the reserves targets that we're suggesting are within reason of what your balances are right now. So these 4% and 3% are just to maintain those reserve balances, basically.
And also, on page 20, Slide 39, you mentioned something about there shouldn't be any cross subsidy between customers. Is there something like that? Have you seen anything like that in, during your analysis of, of our management plan and assets?
No.
No?
I mean, that's why we're suggesting a modest adjustments on the wastewater side. There's a little, I would call it fine-tuning, a realignment, in the sense, metaphorically, with a car.
Okay, and I, I too saw the difference in, in the rates that we charge compared to our neighboring cities, but I think it was sufficiently explained by, by Mr. Spurgeon. I, and I was thoroughly impressed with the 100-year plan. That's something that I didn't expect. 25 years, yes, but 100 years, that is very, very detailed, and that's really forward-thinking. So I do appreciate the, the detailed analysis that you have conducted. It is really eye-opening, and no, it's, it's not, for lack of a better word, sexy, but it is definitely crucial, and it's crucial for Council to know, as well as the residents. So I do appreciate that. Thank you.
We're all accountable for those.
Yeah, well, we can't hold you accountable for the 100 years. That's, no. City manager thought you could, we could. But, all right, are there any further comments or questions? And Mr. Price did have a comment.
I will make my comments now, because actually, as odd as this may sound, I did find this report to be sexy. This, this is, yeah, oddly, but I, I think it's, yeah, hats off to you, Jay. This was the most in-depth analysis that, obviously, this city's ever done, and, and I found it fascinating. We're talking about the infrastructure, the, the pipes that run beneath us, the systems that, that allow us to take showers in the morning and flush our toilets, and these are things that we need to keep our eye on. And I think that clearly, we have been doing that with only 11% of our assets in that, that high-risk category. And I understand why they are. They're, they're in use every day by everybody in this city, and I think this is fantastic. I was just flabbergasted to learn we have over 7,900 manhole covers. That, that was interesting, but I, this was interesting, very.
All right. All accolades aside, is there anyone willing to make the motion to approve the staff recommendation?
I'd be happy to.
Mr. Price?
I would be happy to. I think this is a very important document that we have here, and I would move staff's recommendation, 9A, to approve the water and wastewater asset management plan and the financial plans, and to set January 14th, 2014, as the public hearing date, to establish new rates for 14 and 15.
Very good. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. And is, are we making this report available online to the viewing public or anybody out there in the residence? I think this is just so important to see. I'd like to share it with, with our residents.
Madam Mayor, we will have this available on our webpage, Public Works webpage. Absolutely.
Appreciate that. All right, and we will now skip over various points here, 10, 11, 12, and turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Mitnick.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, not a whole lot of follow-up, but I will note that the individuals who spoke at the beginning with information about upcoming items, such as the Discovery Center speaker series and that type of thing, we'll make sure that's on the city's website or the community calendar. The next city council meeting will be on November 19th. I think that's two weeks from tonight. At this point in time, we have one public hearing scheduled, has to do with the West Shawan Street abandonment, and we have two department reports at this point. One has to do with a new proposed loan with the area housing authority for its Los Villas Affordable Housing Project Phase II. And some good news, we have a department report on the potential acquisition of seven open-space parcels, not large in terms of acreage, but certainly parcels that we've been, we have been eyeing for a while. This is off of Willow, excuse me, Willow Lane, in between Fairview Road and Canal Ridge Road. And a couple plugs here for exciting things coming up. This Thursday, November 7th, two days from today, at 11:30 a.m., we will be holding the ribbon-cutting ceremony and reception at the gardens at the Los Robles Rines. This is an outdoor event facility that the city council has, had worked on for many years. It's finally come to fruition, and we're proud to welcome the community to that event, 11:30 a.m. at the Los Robles Golf Course. There's information on the city's website, no doubt. Also, there'll be a celebration on Sunday, November 17th, commemorating the 10th anniversary of the Amundson Ranch acquisition, actually, technically, the Upper Las Vergenes Canyon Open Space Preserve. That'll be Sunday, November 17th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. All kinds of activities for families and interested parties. There'll be a lot of exhibits, hikes, trail naming, that type of thing. And that's at the Ranch House in Calabasas, and I'm sure there'll be information on the city of Calabasas website, and we'll put a link on our website as well. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, and on that, thank you, is, I will be attending that reception on Sunday, the November 17th, and I would love to see other council members, if your schedule allows, to attend that celebration as well on November 17th. All right, and our meeting is now adjourned until November 19th. Good night.